Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Sean Gallagher, Lake County School District Superintendent. Just want to welcome you to Lakeview High School for this wonderful public event. I think to get us started, let's go ahead and stand up, turn around, and let's say a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To a people of honor for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Once again, thanks for coming. At this time, I'd like to introduce our moderator, who is our Lake County Chamber Director. This is Tulie Keenan.
Thank you and welcome, everybody. I just want to give you an introduction to our honored guest today. A little bit of a bio, Senator Wyden currently is Chair of the Senate Finance Committee. He is ranking Democrat on the Senate Energy and Natural Resources Committee. The senator was first elected in 1996. Since that time, he has committed to hold an open town meeting in every county, every year in Oregon. And this meeting today marks number 702. So, now being said, please give a warm Lake County welcome to the honorable Senator Ron Wyden.
Thank you so much. How many of you have never been to one of our town meetings before? Raise your hands.
Never been.
Ever been to one of ours? Raise your hands. Yep. Okay, so we have some newcomers. Well, what happens is, I start off talking to them for about an hour or so. And it was like really, really hot. Back there, they're thinking I'm serious, their face got all pale. They're like, oh, better be happy. No, we're not going to do anything like that. This is part of the pledge that I made to worry me when we were choosing our first U.S. Senator in 30 years. I said that if I had the honor to be chosen, I would have an open meeting in every county and county, every year that I serve in the Senate. So, this afternoon is Town Hall Meeting Number 702. We just had number 700 a couple days ago in spotlight. So, what that means is, just over 700 times, we've had to open the doors of government. And we said, let's do it the way the founding fathers wanted us to do it. You all are great to come out on a pretty spring day to educate me. I'll give you my best take on what's going on back there. There are no subjects off limits. Anything you want. Also, let's give a big round of applause to the good people at the Chamber and the people at the high school. Let's give them a big round of applause. They've done a great job to the community. And also, let's thank our law enforcement folks there and there in the back. Give them a big round of applause. So, what's your pleasure? Should I just pick people out of the audience, or?
They have tickets.
Oh, yeah, tickets. Okay, you want to call? Call names out? We've got to monetize, get everybody into it, and let's just cover whatever people are interested in. Wayne, did we get the students from outside?
They're sleeping diligent, but they'll be in.
All right, let's get those students in there. They're our future. Okay.
First question, last three digits are 051.
051?
051. There they are.
Well, Senator Wyden, with your position, I'd like to make a quick little point.
My name is Mike Geddy. Lived in Lake County since 1960. Lived in eastern Oregon since 1953. Can you hear me? Did you hear me? Okay, Mike Geddy, resident of Lake County since 1960. Eastern Oregon resident since 1953. And Senator Wyden, this is about the BLM's proposed sage grouse plan. According to the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, 2011, sage grouse populations in Oregon are stable and within a range of natural viability. Sage grouse populations are cyclic. In fact, between 1980 and 2010, populations exceeded 40,000 to 45,000 birds twice, exceeding the statewide no-action level of 40,000 birds. Volume 3 of Appendix N of the BLM's Greater Sage Grouse Plan clearly shows that livestock operators within the Lakeview BLM District are excellent stewards of the land. The livestock operators and BLM personnel work closely and cooperatively together. Of the 103 livestock grazing allotment management plans within the Lakeview BLM District, only one did not meet standards due to livestock grazing. That is commendable for both the Lakeview BLM District and livestock operators. A reduction in grazing is unwarranted. Grazing must remain at the current levels. In 2012, 1 million acres of sage grouse habitat was burned in Arne and Mountier County. The BLM needs more funds to improve their wildlife fighting capabilities in order to improve response times and the use of aerial retardants.
I think you meant wildfire response, right? Wildfire response.
Full suppression of all fires should be mandatory, especially now, since Governor Kitzhoffer has issued a drought declaration for Clamas, Arne, and Mountier Counties. Our community has already been devastated by federal land management policies, specifically the restriction of logging on national forest lands. We can no longer afford more radical land management policies such as the proposed Greater Sage Grouse Plan. The restrictions and closures of the BLM's preferred alternative D are excessive. For Oregon, the preferred alternative must be alternative A, be no-action alternative. Current land management laws, rules, and regulations are more than sufficient. Regardless of what plan may be implemented, predator control must be included in the management tool. Predation by coyotes, ravens, and crows is the most significant factor in determining annual recruitment for sage grouse. I encourage you, Senator Wyden, to get personally involved and closely monitor the progress of the sage grouse plan and carefully read the comments our local citizens are currently submitting. Oregon does not need another plan. The BLM and livestock operators in Oregon have been actively managing for sage grouse for more than a decade through cooperative BLM Resource Management Plan.
Right. That's one point. Oh. There you go. Would you like to have another point?
One more point.
Now, this is a quote from George Washington. "They free people not only to be armed and disciplined, but they should have sufficient arms and ammunition to maintain a status of independence from any who might attempt to abuse them, which would include their own government." Now, I'm bringing this up because of what happened in Nevada last week. The BLM's action last week in Nevada at the Bundy Ranch was a national disgrace. It confirms just how dangerous it is when federal and agencies are allowed to have their own militarized police force, and how important it is for we, the people, to exercise our constitutional rights under the Second Amendment. There were 200 federal agents in full military gear with German Shepherds, attack dogs, and pointing fully automatic M16s at women and children. Is that our future now? A militarized police state where an individual or group of individuals protesting the actions of a global bearing government agency is threatened with lethal force. Federal agencies such as the BLM Forest Service and most other federal agencies must be disarmed. If they have a problem, they can call on the state police or the county sheriff. Now, we have Senator Harry Reid calling Bundy supporters domestic terrorists. He has also stated that we can't have an American people that violate the law and then just walk away from it. Those Americans were exercising their constitutional right to free speech and peaceful assembly. But it's all right, in Reid's mind, that 20 million illegal immigrants can break the law and the people in Washington do nothing about it. Or that Obama and Holder can refuse to enforce a law through direct violation of their oath of office. No one is above the law. If catat化is a result of the BLM piasco in Nevada, then those responsible should be prosecuted for animal neglect and abuse. BLM employees involved in the incident should be investigated and fired, starting with the Secretary of the Interior, the BLM Director, Nevada State Director, and right on down to the local BLM District Manager and others directly involved.
Thank you, Senator Wyden. Thank you. That ought to be enough to keep us entertained for about three or four hours. I got wildfire, sage grouse, and the BLM, what's going on in Nevada, and illegal immigration. So, I got four issues by way of what the gentleman's talking about. First, a bit of good news on the wildfire front. The President, just a couple of weeks ago, accepted the proposal that I and Senator Mike Crapo, he is the Republican Senator from Idaho, and me on the wildfire issue. And what we have proposed is, I think, very appropriate for Lakeview and rural Oregon, because we all know that we have to do more preventive work out there on land. Because what happens is, drought, it gets hotter, drier, and then you have a lightning strike, and all of a sudden, you've got inferno on your hands. So, what's been going on for a lot of years is, when you have one of these big fires, the bureaucracy borrows, quote, borrows, from the prevention fund in order to put the fire out. And the problem gets even worse, because we're not in there doing the preventive work with the thinning and the other work that our timber, timber folks and ranchers and others do, and do so well. So, the President has accepted the bipartisan proposal that I have with Senator Mike Crapo, where, for the first time, the government, if this is adopted, we've got to get it passed. The government would say the biggest fires would be handled through the disaster fund. And that way, you wouldn't keep robbing the prevention fund when we need to be doing this work in terms of thinning out the forests and getting in there and doing what the ranchers and the timber folks do so well. So, that's a bit of good news. It is bipartisan. Senator Crapo's Republican Senator from Idaho, and I'm a Democrat from Oregon, and I think we've got a really good chance to get that passed. So, that's a bit of good news for rural Oregon. That's number one. On the point with respect to the sage grouse, sir, I think you're making some valid points. I'm not sure which of the alternatives is the right way to go, but I start with the proposition that the BLM and our ranchers, our grazing, you know, the grazing families are doing a darn good job now, and I think we ought to stay out until we get it right. So, I think your second point is also one with a lot of validity. Let's talk about the Nevada situation and understand, I've been home, so I don't know anything more than these little snippets that I read in the paper. And so, I see there's a TV camera there, and everybody's going to say, well, Ron has completely decided what he's going to do and all the rest. I'm just going to give you my reaction from the seat of my pants, subject to getting back there and having the chance to actually find out, you know, who did what and when and how. From the articles I've read in the paper, the gentleman, Mr. Bundy, seems to not have paid his rent on the government land. So, you know, that's like a contract. You've got to pay your rent, and apparently, this is just the story, so I don't know anything more than what I read. The gentleman didn't pay his rent. So, you've got to, let me just finish this. You've got to do that, just the stories are right. Now, does that warrant this gigantic showing of, you know, force in terms of guns and having all the guns pointed, guns pointed against children, things that I read? Certainly, from the seat of my pants, I'd suggest not. So, give me a little bit of time to kind of walk through the specifics, but as is usually the case with me, I want to be fact-driven. You know, a lot of these debates back there are not driven by the facts. You've got, you know, people say it's all this way, and then they go, no, it's all that way. And I think we ought to kind of take the time to kind of figure out what's actually going on. And I know nothing other than the same newspaper stories you read, and I looked online, and my God, you look online, and people are charging each other with all kinds of crazy things. But from the seat of my pants, I have some questions. The gentleman needs to pay his rent, because we all don't pay our rent, and things are going to be problematic under our contract. But also, our government's got to have some sense of proportion, and I read all about the people, the guns, and the various weapons, and who they were pointing to in the land. So, I'm going to need a little more time on that. On the illegal immigration, I do think we're on the cusp of dealing with that. The Senate passed a very good bill. The House of Representatives is dealing with it now. Mr. Boehner, the Speaker, just said two days ago that it was a top priority for him to pass a bill, which means tightening up the borders, enforcing the laws on the books. And then, the big challenge, of course, is what to do with all the people in our country now illegally and undocumented. I and others, by the way, what I'm going to say to you is pretty close to what George W. Bush and the late Ted Kennedy were talking about, again, in a bipartisan way. I personally believe that if those individuals who have been here illegally come forward voluntarily, pay a fine because they broke the law, show that they have mastered English, and demonstrate that they have not broken any other laws, I personally would give them the opportunity to go to the end of the citizenship line and apply to be a citizen. So, you hit four points and four very important ones, and that's kind of my seat-of-the-pants reaction.
Next is number 071.
We'll just give you all the microphone. Senator Will Keighley, I'm an educator. I'm also a cattle rancher from Adel. My family's entering 100 years in business this year. And I'm going to echo what Mr. Geddy said over there in regard to the sage grouse proposal. I've watched this town in the course of 56, 57 years of my life go into serious decline, starting off with the issues related to closing down the timber industry in the woods and everything else. We run our cattle up in an allotment called Barley Camp, and since they shut down that forest, it is very disheartening to me to see thousands of acres of timber just dying up there. And to me, that's very poor stewardship at best. And where this is leading to is, I see this sage grouse issue being very similar to Spotted Out. Spotted Out pretty much closed down the entire Pacific Northwest timber industry. I see the sage grouse doing the same thing to the ranching industry as well in the American West. In direct relation to our situation and the proposal, one of our allotments has been designated a research natural area. And to me, it doesn't make much sense in that regard, since there's two refuges in the Warner Valley area, the Hurd Mountain National Refuge and the Sheldon National Refuge as well. The Sheldon National Refuge is 10 miles away from our allotment, and it would make more sense to me if they were shut down in specific public lands, that they do it on the Sheldon National, I mean, they do this grazing test or this sage grouse, you know, study on the Sheldon National Refuge instead of, you know, closing down our grazing lands. So, with that, you know, I just think that there needs to be a common sense approach to this sage grouse proposal.
Nice talk there, right there. Wayne, what the gentleman says makes a lot of sense to me. Can you follow that up and find out? Let's find out why the government couldn't do what the gentleman suggested.
I will. But anyway, the long and the short of it is, you know, if, as Mr. Geddy said, alternative D takes effect from this BLM proposal, it's going to have a devastating effect on the ranching community in Lake County. And specifically, these areas that are designated AC/EC and in the RNAs and are ranch-included. So, anyway, I appreciate whatever you can do to support the ranchers in eastern Oregon, and please look at the possibility of doing these studies on refuges rather than creating these RNAs. Thank you.
Mr. Trow is here too, Mr. Kenny. And Mary, you were out of room. The rancher was making a very good point about where some of these grazing tests are being done, and made a point that struck me as a very sensible way to do it without getting in the way of their ranching operations. So, what we're going to do, sir, is we're going to get your email and phone, and then we're going to call you.
I've got it, and I know it.
Okay, good. So, I already said what I thought about the sage grouse kind of, you know, issue, so we can kind of spare you the having to be repeated on that. By the way, if any of you are asking why I'm not wearing like a shirt and a tie and being respectful like I probably should, we were just at the Clamas Refuge, because we announced the agreement, because we got the ranchers and the farm birds and the tribes together, and I think it's going to be a really big boost for how to get everybody together to deal with water. So, that's why I'm dressed a little informally and I hope, you know, I'm here to take something disrespectful or anything like that. On the point of timber, though, we have also some pretty good news. I have been able to put together a bill that has gotten a fair amount of industry and environmental support for all of the east side forests. You may have heard about this. And you see it already in action in Primeville, where John Schough, who had that mill, Ochko Lumber, the harvest is significantly up and the litigation is down. And what I hope that bill that I've introduced can do is basically take what's happened there with Ochko Lumber in Primeville, do it throughout the east side forests. And I'll just tell you, and it reflects my judgment on this, because I'm Chairman of the Finance Committee here in the last month, because of the rise of, like, Chairman of the Energy and Natural Resources Committee. Until then, you know, we've got a lot of people in Oregon who are allergic to compromise, which is like, it's like they practically break out in hives if anybody tries to bring people together. And I'm a natural resources, I'm a strong believer in multiple youth. I think we can find a variety of ways to live and get, you know, together. Ranchers, it seems to me, understand how important the environment, you know, is, because they live it and breathe it. And I tell the environmentalists, if we really want to have environmental problems, run the ranchers off the land, because then there won't be anybody there to try to take the steps to responsibly, you know, manage our treasures. So, there's a bit of good news there on the east side timber front, in addition to the point I made earlier to the gentleman who asked about the wildfire issue. And again, let me do my due diligence, but from the seat of my pants, what you were talking about in terms of how that testing works, sure sounds reasonable to me. And Mr. Kenny, Wayne, you'll follow up with the gentleman on that? And if a lot of people have numbers in their hands that aren't going to ask their questions, I'm going to come to your house. I'm going to find out where you are, and I'm going to come to your house, and you guys will have to ask your questions about your, I'm teasing, but don't be bashful. It's going to be fun, and not like Norm and the Democrats, okay?
074.
And by the way, does anybody, the Wydens have three children? I hear six. Our twins are six, and my little girl is 15 months. But has anybody seen around here two prettier girls than one lovely one? Oh, my goodness, I told her, um, she is more like, they're getting ready for Easter, and they said they're going to come here, they're the senators.
Okay, the next number then is 057.
Oh, that's me.
Okay.
Well, first of all, I'm.
Hold up here.
First of all, I'm a supporter of the Affordable Care Act, and I hope it gets better, because I think a lot of people need it, especially young people. I just hope they'll tweak it enough to make it available. And the other thing is the GMOs, the genetic thing on my, everyone's.
Organs.
Oh, organs, okay. Yeah, I'm concerned about that. I've seen a lot of, how that's affecting all of our food, and, you know, our children are, it's, what else? Issues.
Two good points on the GMOs. I think the real issue for me, as you know, we had a, thank you, we had a big challenge last summer where something got into the wheat in eastern Oregon, and I had to really step in and work with Department Agriculture and Japanese, because we were about to have a whole wheat season sort of blown up, and we were able to do it. I continue to believe that the best answer in terms of a policy, not those kind of emergency situations where we concern the Philly's criminal activity, is disclosure. People ought to have the right to know what is in foodstuffs, and particularly now, where there's synthetic foodstuffs and the like. I just think that freedom is really a good principle, consistent with what the Department Agriculture, the Food and Drug Administration tries to do, as long as people know what's at issue, where there's transparency, and people know whether it is a food product that includes the GMOs. On the Affordable Care Act, how many of you came to talk about the health care situation? I have never been to a meeting, so few people asked about Obamacare. You're tired.
I'm concerned, Ron, but that's not my question today.
Look, the reality is, this is a big change, virtually. All the, you know, big changes certainly involve a lot of questions and confusion and the like. And I compare this to what George W. Bush did with adding prescriptions to Medicare. You know, this was a number of years ago. Virtually no Democrats voted for George Bush's proposal. I was one of them. And oh, my goodness, I took so much flack. Oh, you're voting for George W. Bush. Oh, you're voting for Big Pharma. Oh, you don't care about the old guy. And I said, we've just got to get started here. We saw how hard it was on seniors with their medicine. You know, we had people literally giving up food and meals, and we couldn't afford the medicine. And the stories about the Medicare Part D, the prescription proposal, in the first few months, it's amazing how those stories were exactly like the stories we've been hearing about about Obamacare, all right? So, there's a lot to do here, and I'm going to be as bipartisan on the Obamacare deal as I was on George W. Bush's proposal, because I think health care is a hugely important issue. It's almost 18% of our economy today. It's, of course, what you think about in your household, if you and your loved ones don't have your health, it's pretty hard to think about anything else. So, this is really high-stakes stuff. So, there are plenty of areas where I think Democrats and Republicans can improve this. As Chairman of the Finance Committee in the Senate, this is where Obamacare will go. So, we'll, like, you've probably heard of Ms. Seville, she has resigned, and so we'll have Sylvia Matthews Burwell coming to be nominated. My committee will be handling the hearings, so you'll be hearing a lot about how we help you. So, one, we're going to try to be bipartisan. Two, I hope people will think through the consequences of just saying, let's get rid of this thing, okay? Because that's kind of what a lot of people say, let's just get rid of it. If we get rid of it, America goes back to the days when health care was really healthy and wealthy. And I use those words specifically, because if you just get rid of it, you allow the insurance companies to discriminate once again against anybody with a pre-existing condition. And if that's allowed, the way the world works, if you're healthy, you've got nothing to worry about. If you're wealthy, you can write out those checks. But if you repeal this and go back to those days, the people with pre-existing conditions are going to go to bed at night worried once again that they're going to be wiped out because of their illness. And I don't think we want to turn the clock back on that. Improving this, working in a bipartisan way, kind of what needed to be done on the Part D. D, absolutely, there are plenty of ways this needs to be worked on, and Democrats and Republicans can do it together. But I'm just cautioned about just getting rid of it, going back to when we didn't have it, because I think our country would be ruined.
Next number is oh five eight.
That's me, but I don't have a question. I thought it was door crisis.
I'm not a lawless pops, we're up here. Somebody's up there, we're gonna get a deep fryer. Are you adopted?
Am I what?
Are you adopted, and I don't want that?
Uh, no.
Okay, the next number is oh five nine. Five two. Today, about oh four nine.
Um, I, the only question I would have, I'd go back to the fire thing.
Yeah.
And when I came here in the late sixties or late seventies, this part of the world, or whenever it was, there were maybe a half a dozen people who worked for the Bureau of Land Management, and most of the work was done by private contractors. And I would like to see more of that today, and I know they're doing more of that with firefighting, you know, because they pretty much have to. And I'd like to see more of that. There's just a lot of, a lot of guys unemployed right now, and don't know what to do, who are really talented and can do that type of work. And then, uh, that's the end of that. The, my other thing is that, um, I'm a retired businessman, and I sold my business about a year and a half ago, and, um, in the contract, I've gotten some pretty serious tax trouble. And I'd like you to know that your office was the only people who had helped us out.
To get it worked out?
No.
Well, we gotta stay out until it's done?
I, I still owe the money, and I, and I intend to pay it. I, I just need, well, to sell some property, and right now, property's just a mess. But anyway, I, I appreciate the help, and I think that Mr. Wyden is scared for, for all of our Gomians, whether they're Republican or a Democrat, and it seems to be a good thing.
Thank you, thank you.
I could swear, remember, I left my ticket in the bathroom.
That's all right. We won't, we won't call this scam, just like in New York, Washington. I yield to the gentle lady who happens to be my wife.
Well, I just want to reiterate what he said. When we found out that the bulk of our contract with payoff business debt was treated as income, and we owed the government, state of Oregon and IRS, two hundred and eleven thousand dollars, we just almost fell to pieces, and you were the only ray of hope. You took so much pressure off of us. I, if there's anything that we can ever do for you, you have us, and thank you very much.
Well, you know, one of the things, and, and I want to make sure, Wayne and Mary, if you guys, Wayne, Mary, if y'all can, Mary? If you can just get phone numbers and emails so that we can have the Finance Committee staff.
Absolutely.
You know, work would give me now, since, you know, what happened was, Max Flock, as we'd already expected, just became ambassador to China, and a whole bunch of other people retired, and so all of a sudden, our corridor was mobbed with people saying, oh my goodness, Ron is chairman of the Finance Committee, oh my goodness. And so we've got some extra staff people, and I want to have one of the Finance Committee staff, Mary, call them again and see what else we can do to, you know, be of help, because I'm sure you can have our personal staff, you know, help, and they're very good too. Since I've been on the Finance Committee, they do focus on taxes. We've got some new resources, and I want to have the Finance Committee staff call you again and see what else, um, we can do. What I think is also highlighted, and everybody says this, but nobody does it, the tax code is a dysfunctional, overly complicated mess, and it's a wonder that anybody can figure this thing, you know, how. So I'm gonna make a special priority, working with Republican staff, bipartisan, comprehensive reform. And by the way, we've got a pretty good model on it. When Democrats and Ronald Reagan, by the way, Bob Packwood was involved in this, got together back in the eighties, what they did is dramatically simplify this code, got it down to a couple of brackets, kind of graduated, so it was fair. They cleaned out a lot of the special interest breaks in order to hold down the rates for everybody. And then the two years after that tax reform bill passed, the country created 6.2 million new jobs. Now, I don't think it'd be right to say every one of those jobs came about as a result of tax reform, that would not be fair, but it sure helped. So a big part of what we're gonna try to do here on taxes is simplify it, and if any of you are having trouble sleeping tonight, you can go to our website, you can read the tax reform bill that I already put up there. We have seriously, we have a one-page, ten-forty form. It's got about thirty, thirty-one lines, and the people at Money Magazine took a typical return and did it under our one-page, ten-forty form, and they were able to do their return in about forty minutes. So a big part of this is, we ought to say, and I appreciate your kind words, is, is an overly complicated tax code a Democratic issue or a Republican issue? I certainly don't think so. I think it's a common sense, you know, issue. We want a tax code that encourages growth and fairness, gives everybody a chance to get ahead, not put people through bureaucratic water torture. So we'll have our finance folks, you know, call again, and I can only imagine, you know, when, you gotta pay the dip back, you've got property, but the prices aren't particularly good, and you're trying to figure out how to juggle it, you know, what kind of sleepless nights you get out of that, so I'm gonna have the finance folks give you a call.
Oh five two.
Senator, my name's Rick Demilleu, and I've been with the Lake County Road Department for thirty-eight years. I, I know you know what my question's gonna be. I just want to, first of all, thank you that in two thousand, you're the one that started the SRS bill, and we've been getting extensions, which has only been about thirty...
Did you get your check here in the last few days?
I haven't, but I do know it's in the mail. Thank you. I'd like to update on SRS, plus, I would like to know, when it comes to, every year, trying to figure if we're gonna get anything or not, Lakeview is a small community, or Lake County, with a small population. Gas and registration fees doesn't help our income at all. As soon as we lose anything to do with SRS, we're out. The Chris's Valley area itself, with the roads and commodities, it's over a hundred million dollars in hay that comes out of there, fifty thousand trucks, and this community is, is gonna be devastated if that rots the commodities market. Will we ever get to a point that we can get some payment every year we can count on for schools and roads in lieu of taxes for all the federal land? Now, I know, of course, healthy forests, and I know we're working on that, but I know that logging's not gonna get us back where we're at.
And you give some pilfer to, too, right?
Right, but that goes to general funds.
General county funds.
Yeah, it doesn't help the road department. We are getting some, a little bit, at this county, but two hundred and fifty thousand. At a four million dollar budget, my total income, if I don't have SRS, it's probably about eight hundred thousand. With your help with the step outs, at least I get that one point seven, but I'm still way short. And these roads are, we've been going this way for about six years, and they don't look at like it on top, but they're suffering down underneath, and our infrastructure, roads and...
Okay. Here's where we are on this, and the, the point that's being highlighted here is, of course, we pay for services differently than they do back east. You know, the reality is, back east, they got mostly private property. Somebody sells a piece of private property, and tax revenue is generated, and they use it for services. They use it for the schools, and police, and roads, that's basically where it goes. We, of course, can't do that, because a hundred years ago, when the national forest system was created, a big chunk of our land, this is where God put the trees, a big chunk of our land went into the national forest system. So what that means is, somebody in Iowa, or Tallahassee, or Chicago owns our land, just like three hundred million other communities, the land belongs to the people. And the deal was worked out, as you know, a hundred years ago, is that communities like ours would get a big check from the federal government tied to cutting timber on federal land. And we'd get that check, and we'd use it for roads, and schools, and police, and we could go about our business and keep our communities healthy. And that worked really well for about ninety years or so. And then, as the environmental values changed, that money began shrink, shrink, shrink. And in two thousand, when I got to the Senate, and nobody knew really who I was, just some skinny guy from Oregon, I kind of snuck up on them, and I wrote this law that pretty much replaced a big chunk of that money. So the program the gentleman is talking about is the law that I wrote in two thousand that has brought Oregon about two and a half billion dollars. That's Oregon's share of the Secure Rural Schools Bill that you're talking about, that I wrote back in two thousand. Now, the good news, and why I asked if you got the check, is that everybody said, oh, it's over, Ron's not gonna be able to do it again, it's done, cut, departed. And we kind of told a little bit of a rabbit out the hat here, um, early last year, you may have heard that we figured out a way to sell off the helium reserve. Now, a lot of people thought that was for party balloons, but it really wasn't, it used to be used for defense, but it wasn't really essential anymore, and it wasn't good for our businesses, and it wasn't good for anybody. It's three presidents, and five congresses have been trying to get rid of it. And I got together with the Republicans, we managed to do it, we sold it off, and some of the money goes to pay down the deficit, and a big chunk of it goes for the yearly payment for Secure Rural Schools. So you ought to be getting that check. A couple of communities already got it that I've seen this trip. So if a dozen arrives this week, Wayne, you check in with the Roads Department here in Lake, but unless I'm missing something, you, it's either in your mailbox or it's coming, because a lot of...
You could have carried in the last two or three.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of rural communities that we've seen on this trip have gotten it. Now, that doesn't mean we're home by any stretch of the imagination, which is what you were saying. I think we've gotta have a two-part strategy. One, we've gotta get folks back to work in the woods, and that's the point of the bill that I just described for the east side forests, where we get the harvest, you know, up, and reduce the litigation, and the frivolous appeals, and that sort of thing. And that should be one part of it, and the second part is, we will continue to need safety net, what the Secure Rural Schools is all about. Together, if we can get the two on a rational, organized system, so that people don't go through that kind of perils and Pauline kind of situation, I think that will bring some stability for roads, and police, and schools, and the like. So what I got on my sleeve this time, which I kind of wish I'd thought about back in two thousand, is I want to see if we can make common cause between all the areas where there's federal land and federal water. And the reason why is, in almost all those places where there's federal land and federal water, there are some sensible people like you, and the gentleman who asked about the sage grouse, who want to do multiple use, and they get together around a table like this, and the industry people sit here, and the environmental people sit there, and the scientists sit there, and they work out of overfull-use capacity, so that they could put some of it to work for development and extraction, and some of it for the environment and the like. And if we could make common cause between all the places where there's federal land and federal water, where there are people having the same kind of meetings, I went to Louisiana for Senator Landry, the senator from Louisiana, and I said, Mary, this meeting looks exactly like the meetings we're having in rural Oregon, except that the Louisiana French dialect accent is real different than I'm here in one of our meetings, but the substance of the meeting is the same. So that's a longer answer than you wanted, but it's a really good question, and that's what I'm looking at, to try to get us finally, once and for all, off this rover.
I, I just wanted to add to, Senator, it's my opinion that, since two thousand, that you personally have done more for us and funny than anybody else. I watched the House and Senate arguing stuff, and I just said, Senator Wyden, it comes or it doesn't, it comes. So, you know, you're, you're pretty high in my book, but you can jump up and down.
Very, very kind of you. I don't, I don't have all the answers, not, but I have a, a long shot, and, you know, my wife, you know, owns a great bookstore back east, and is always on the airplane getting to Oregon, taking care of the children and whatnot, and she said, the other day, she said, you know, dear, all they ever do in Washington is bicker and fight. It just is nonstop, and everybody I talk to says, how are you gonna change it? I said, well, you're trying to run your store, and trying to take care of the kids, and I asked her where she spends her life, and she said, mostly in the airport. I said, dear, I just want you to know, I'm gonna tell you the same thing I say at the town hall meeting, I'm gonna do everything I can as my number one priority to try to cut through the bickering and quarreling. And I don't know how much time we've been here, we've been here forty-five minutes, I haven't mentioned Democrats or Republicans. Look, I'm a Democrat, and I'm proud to be a Democrat, but first and foremost, I'm an Oregonian and American, and I'm trying to get people together, to try to find some common ground. So I really appreciate the kind words, and, and it just seems to me, when you're trying to run your roads program, and when you're wrestling with your taxes, the last thing you want is some big political speech where you say, it's this person's fault, and the other person's a louse, and I'm better, and all the rest. I just don't have any patience for it, and I think what the country wants is some problem-solving, and it may not be very flashy and sensationalistic, but I think it really is, is what we need.
Number oh six two.
Senator, I want to thank you for having us come in. My name's Jason Schirr, I'm a certified registered nurse, and that's the best here in Lake District, Chicago. And I know someone like all this from Oregon Association, and that's the division in Washington.
They were just back there.
Yeah, they were, they were just back there.
You gotta, you gotta come somehow.
Yeah, yeah. Actually, I was there last week, I just had some other, other obligations that I had here to meet. So I've been serving here at the hospital over a year now, and there are some things we, you know, the National Association has said you support, President SGL, as your mayor, also updating the VA handbook for scanning aids. Just, that's just what the code of farming was having, they tried it.
More flexibility for taking care of the soldier.
Exactly, exactly. And that also supports the Institute of Medicine Report, which became a twenty-ten, which supports healthcare providers being utilized to protect their health insurance.
Right. Be able to, in effect, be able to play off the top of your life.
Right, exactly.
That's in my chronic care bill, too.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, that's one thing, the Association also asked for support of title aid funding.
Of what?
Title aid funding, for, I mean, that's how we're gonna get more nurses, more healthcare workers over time. I believe this year was about two fifty million dollars, so, for that. On a personal note, for this hospital, the U.S. that just supported the elimination of the ninety-six hour old, for, for these hospitals, I mean, this hospital's support services, not only by county, but several counties. I've talked to the, one of the gentlemen in the Oregon Office of Rural Health, I mean, he told me a pleasure about this county, that the county's considered a frontier county because it has an population of under ten thousand people. And we also... And we also service, you know, parts and portions of rural California and a little of that as well, some of those rural areas. So, yeah.
Where's the sign in camp? I was just asking the staff, you've got this great sign in town, a sign that goes Winemucca, like 90 miles, Boise a certain number of miles, Portland a certain number of miles. Is it on 97? Where is that sign?
Um, you know, it's sort of, I don't know what that one is. I know there's a sign that says Winemucca going out on 140.
Doesn't it point to four states? I think it does.
It might, it might. I think that's just north of, something over there.
Where's it with 140? Did you know the sign you're talking about?
I think that's just north, I think that's just north of town where 140 takes off.
140, yep.
Because it talks about Winemucca. Obviously, we know it's service there, but they do service. I've had patients having a client, which is more, more pleasant than, kind of north of the Cedarville area. So we asked for that and the other thing that we got was, a lot of hospitals have the problem with the two midnight rule.
Right.
So there could be a case for that.
Sort of like the 96-hour rule.
Yeah, it's kind of like the 96-hour rule, but it's causing a lot of havoc in a lot of hospitals in Washington. Okay. Thank you very much.
You all did such a good job. The nursing and nurses, particularly in rural areas, we didn't have, we would really, I think, be up against it in terms of trying to take care of a lot of, particularly the older people who need those services. So I think you know, I support virtually everything that you talked about these, you know, the two midnight rule, the 96-hour rule. What these are, are basically rules where the federal government just kind of misses what life is like in rural America. It's, you know, people often ask me, "So Ron, how does this come about?" And like, what I say is, very rarely does somebody back in Washington DC get up in the morning and say, "I want to spend my day getting rotten till late field." Okay? There may be somebody and I acknowledge that that can happen, but for the most part, that's not what happens. What happens is, people get up, they've got a lot to do, they have these gigantic rule books and the concern on the rules, the two midnight rule, the 96-hour rule, they're concerned about, well, if you don't have these restrictions, could people be getting unqualified practitioners and the like? So on the Finance Committee, Senator Sim, the Republican Senator from South Dakota, has really taken the lead on a number of these, just a couple of days ago at Mississippi last hearing, Senator Sim brought it up and I've worked very closely with him and I said publicly, "I'm gonna be working with him once again on the critical access facility in both of those rules you're talking about." And as I think you know, I'd only been at the Finance Committee like, I think, 14 days or something and we had that STR proposal come up and I feel so strongly that we permanently fix this outdated system for reimbursing, you know, doctors. And it is particularly important, given how dramatic the changes are in Medicare in the last couple of decades. Medicare, of course, began in 1965, God sent for older people. And Medicare in 2014 is nine years away from Medicare in 1965. Medicare in 2014, folks, is basically a chronic disease program. It is a program where over 80% of the money, over 85% of the money, goes for diabetes, it goes for cancer, it goes for strokes and heart problems and Alzheimer's. That's where virtually all the money goes. And like, we've got a lot of seniors, you know, here, and I sure hope nobody trips going out, you know, in the rain or something and breaks their ankle. But, you know, that's up covered Medicare service. All of that kind of thing together doesn't amount to 15% of Medicare. The Medicare dollar is going for chronic disease, which is why we so badly need the new Medicare reimbursement system that your very talented professional is here calling for, because it will reward coordinated care. Now, the good news on that is I've introduced legislation, bipartisan legislation with Senator Isaacson, Republican Senator from Georgia, we have a Democrat, Republican in the House who's done it, that would for the first time really improve the care for that population, start to coordinate those services. And the reason that's so important, and the seniors know it, do all you seniors know you get a free physical under Medicare, you know, now? Basically, for a lot of seniors with chronic disease, after they get that free physical, everything just goes off the rails until they go to the hospital emergency room, where they have to be cared for in the hospital emergency room, to get that big old deductible, like $1,100. And the doctor in the hospital emergency room says, "Ma'am or sir, who has been in charge of your care?" And the person that's seen so many different people and tried to do so many different things, they can't even remember who's been in charge in the hospital emergency room, doesn't even know how, who to send the record to, so you can keep it from happening all over again. So the point that gentleman's making is hugely important. And I just tell you from the standpoint of the budget, Medicare is the bargain. Medicare is the bargain. There is no program run at the federal level approaching Medicare as a structural budget challenge. Like Medicare is here and everything else is here. It really is that, you know, dramatic and we're gonna have to get again some bipartisanship. In 2011, I did a proposal with Congressman Paul Ryan and oh my God, you would have thought Western civilization had ended. Somebody probably heard that Democrats were so mad and there was, "How can Ron do this? Oh my goodness, what is he doing and what's this all about?" And I said, "Guys, we're gonna have to figure out how to make these reforms." So I'm very much committed to this and it goes to the Finance Committee and this will be a top priority of mine because we cannot protect seniors and guarantee benefits unless we also take some steps in these areas like chronic care reform, the proposals you're talking about, STR reform and the like. He's not gonna be able to get them. I have a lot longer answer than you, but that is a really, really important issue.
Thanks so much, Senator Wyden, for visiting us. I'm Andrea Reber, I live in Adele, and want to talk to you very briefly about wild horses. As I'm sure you're aware, the BLM is in a state of complete paralysis with regard to regulating wild horse populations. And this has touched Lake County and our community very strongly. There is, in Lake County and Hardy County as well, a very large HMA horse management area called Beatty Butte.
Called Beatty?
Uh, it is called Baby Butte.
Oh, Baby, yeah, Baby.
And Beatty Butte is also a grazing allotment. It's a large allotment, there are 10 family ranchers that run on that allotment and depend on that grazing. AML, appropriate management level for horses on Beatty Butte, is between 100 and 250. According to the BLM's count, there are currently over 1,000 horses on Beatty Butte, not counting this spring's bull crop. So they are running at over 400%. This is not just an issue pertaining to ranchers. Over 90% of Beatty Butte is classified as core sage grouse habitat by ODF and W. There's a lot of other wildlife out there.
So you're kind of moving towards the point the gentleman made earlier on sage grouse?
Well, except that here specifically, it's the horses that are affecting the sage grouse and the lack of regulation of the horses. Now, in different communities throughout the West where this horse situation has been impacting ranchers and other people, communities have taken different approaches. There are a number of communities that are litigating against the BLM. Without judging that, Lake County ranchers and a broad coalition of individuals have decided to take a different route. We have created what we're calling the Beatty Butte Wild Horse Collaborative. It is a broad-based bipartisan group of people who are interested in bringing the community's knowledge and talents and abilities to bear on helping the BLM solve this problem locally and in a grassroots way. Included in our coalition is the Governor Kithobbers Natural Resource Advisor.
Bishop Whitman?
Uh, no, it's Brett Brownson.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
ODF and W, both Lake and Hardy Counties, the Beatty Butte Grazing Association, a number of veterinarians and others. And our group.
Do you have the animal, what do they call it, animal rights people in this area, too?
At this point, we do not have animal rights people in our coalition. Our interest is to advance and execute a collaborative management program whereby a group of locally-based ranchers would assist the BLM in managing the horses once a major gather down to AML is executed. And we have been getting lots of positive feedback from the BLM, but the hitch is that we're asking them to think about doing something that's different. And when you're working with the federal government, of course, that's always the sticking point.
Federal government does not specialize in different.
No, they don't. And they don't specialize in brainstorming or thinking outside the box. So despite the fact that we have a lot of support from the BLM, what I am asking you for today is to help move this process forward by lending first your support and also helping us ease over any hurdles that we might have. Wayne was at our last meeting, so he was privy to what's going on. But we are going to need your help in order to execute what would be the first locally-based wild horse overpopulation solution, and I think it'd be a real feather in Oregon's cap to execute this.
Sounds great, great. And Wayne, what kind of take can you have on the Wild Horse Collaborative model that the speaker was talking about? Certainly sounds like a good idea. I think the only thing, I just always urge everybody, get all the stakeholders you possibly can, because when people are under the tent, there's an old saying, which I will not go into, but having everybody under the tent is a lot better.
Well, they're a real good start with that. They're all with different groups in that room.
Good.
And if they can get the, that arrangement work out, potentially the SIMPLOD, then they get a lot, a lot of the excess horses moved off.
Good. We'll work with you. I like the concept of bludgeon.
Thank you.
All this collaboration is logical for the federal government. Get the workout out of them, do that.
067?
I'm getting Ken on the left and tip of the order.
Sean wore a big tie, he's gotta get down to the bus.
Thank you. Senator, as you can see in our walls around here, we celebrate education because this building was built in 1962 and that's basically how far back our pictures of graduates are. I do believe that Mr. Kenny is in one of those pictures. Is that correct?
Oh, I didn't, my son went to Bailey here, but I did not.
Oh, okay, okay. So, anyway. As the school district superintendent, of course, you're gonna ask a question about education. We do, as you know, receive most of our funding from the state level, but we do receive a significant amount of funding from the federal level, whether it's special ed dollars, Perkins Grant dollars for career technical education programs, or Title I dollars for students who are struggling in reading.
Secure rural schools.
Secure rural schools dollars, the whole bit. It seems to us in education that over time, the accountability standards at the federal level have increased, but the funding seems to be in a steady decline. And I was wondering if my comment on that a little bit, kind of help us understand what's going on and maybe what your stance is on that particular topic.
You're asking a very good question and essentially, my view is, the debate about this topic really took a very sharp, different path when George W. Bush had finally agreed on, "There's no child behind." And back then, there was a theory which no one could really dispute, that there would be additional funds for the schools because it was so important that we support education, particularly with our kids trying to compete in this global economy against China and India, there'd be additional funds for the schools and there would be realistic accountability over the funds. You put that up on the wall and you say, "Who can be against that?" Theory must have passed a gazillion nothing. You know, basically, everybody said, "George Jefferson Bush is very conservative, and Kennedy is very liberal." They got together and made an agreement. Well, what happened is, not long after the agreement, things seemed to go kind of off the rails. The funding really didn't come through, but boy, you found all kinds of accountability drills that really just seemed to defy, you know, common sense. I remember at one point, our then superintendent of public construction was a woman named Susan Castillo, and she and I went around the state and, you know, they had those measures for what would constitute a failing school. And there was a school with all low-income kids and minority youngsters and the parents were super involved and the test scores were off the charts. And they were about to declare this school a failing school because apparently there'd been a flu kind of outbreak and a bunch of kids in one winter missed a whole lot of days, but even with missing the days, they hit the standards. And so I heard about this and I called up the fellow from the Education Department, Secretary Bush's, Secretary, I said, "Secretary, I'm gonna be respectful here, but it seems to me that you all ought to be giving this school a parade and bake them a cake and give them some awards rather than hold them out as being a failing school. And if you declare them to be a failing school, I'm gonna go to the floor of the United States Senate and I'm gonna talk about this until we get this changed." Because I don't think this is what the United States Congress thought we were gonna get in what we were very encouraged about in this bipartisan effort with Senator Kennedy and George W. Bush. Well, long and short of it was, within a week, I think we got them out and under there being declared a failing school or whatever it was. Sure, period of time we got, you know, that taken care of. But ever since then, I've been watching this kind of teach-to-the-test, one-size-fits-all, federal cookie cutter kind of approach. And we're gonna go through the same debate with Common Core and the like. And I want to understood that I strongly, strongly support effective targeted measures where the federal government is involved. I think, for example, the STEM program is a very good one. I don't know if you all are doing it, but you know, with emphasis on science, technology, this is a very good targeted kind of, kind of program. I supported the efforts where there was help with languages and the like. But just to have everybody teach for the test and one-size-fits-all and somebody back in the Beltway telling everybody in any big school, you know, in Iowa or Oregon or somewhere, "This is the way it's gonna be," just doesn't make any sense to me. So that's really been my position and I think as we go to the next round, we ought to be more interested in individual progress than just trying to tell everybody to teach for the test.
My name is Norma Lund and I'm an retired educator and the student of history. And the concern that I have is a recent Supreme Court decision. I feel in studying history, there were two Supreme Court findings that probably have done or will do more mischief than any others. The first one was Webb's Act and it took a civil war and four constitutional amendments to change that, but it still hasn't been changed. I think that Citizens United, that decision is just as mischievous as far as rights are concerned. And I'd just like to know- And, um, I do like to know, I know there are at least two, many more constitutional amendments now in Congress, and I'd like to have you respond to that, uh, give us some information on those and work with them.
The question is extremely important, and it goes right to the heart of kind of why we're here and what the founding fathers really had in mind with respect to how we govern ourselves. The Supreme Court has really clearly been moving with respect to campaign finance to say that for purposes of the law, the rich guy's checkbook and the poor guy's soapbox are the same thing. They're moving to say that all of this is protected First Amendment speech, and you can't do anything to limit it. That's where they're moving. That's where the Citizens United case that you talked about, uh, initially took us, and then you're probably aware of your, the recent decision of McCutcheon case, which really is moving to take the hinges off the doors of democracy. They basically say you can't limit what a person can give. In other words, if we keep the limit for an individual, what they could take, but they give the scores to these different committees, groups and organizations. And I just think this is really an ominous development. And I can tell you, a lot of people in elected office are wondering why they should do what we're doing here today. In other words, I think we're doing it because the founding fathers had in mind. And I'm from Portland. I love Portland, but I am not a United States Senator from the state of Portland. I went to school on a basketball scholarship, dreaming of playing in the NBA. I was ridiculous theory, I was too small and I made up for it, but I mean, slow. So my only frustration about Portland is I wish I could have played for the Blazers. But the point is, that's not what being senators about is, just representing the areas where the people are and, of course, where there's likely to be more campaign donations and the like. The idea is to make sure that everybody's got a place at the table. And what concerns me is if this trend continues, I guess elected officials are going to mostly spend their time up there with their tin cup, raising money. And they're going to say, what would you go to a small town for and talk to forty people or thirty, whatever, whatever number, why would you do that? Why wouldn't you just spend your time going to golf courses and having tournaments and hotel dinners and all the rest? So this is a big deal in terms of what it represents to our country. So my sense is that this, this court is going to require a constitutional amendment to limit campaign spending. I support that. I voted for it. One thing I want to get done before November, Senator Lisa Murkowski, she is the Republican Senator from Alaska, she and I introduced the only bipartisan proposal in this Congress that would require a real-time disclosure of money that's being donated. And Senator Murkowski says it really well. I love this phrase. If you've watched her, she's very thoughtful, articulate senator. She said, Ron and I are trying to do the even Steven rule. The same rule applies to the NRA as applies to the Sierra Club. All the big donations, not the, you know, not just twenty-dollar donations, the big donations have got to be disclosed in real time so that people can know who's given that money, because the sums of money are outrageous, number one, but even more outrageous to me, if you don't have any idea when you go vote, who's doing it? Sometimes senators joke that they want to have to put on a jacket that says, you know, so-and-so sponsoring and so-and-so supporting you or something like that. So, um, I think this is a really very serious, you know, issue, and you're right, there've been a couple of Supreme Court decisions in our time. Red Scott was one, as you know, we dealt with that for decades and decades, really. Lyndon Johnson, we all remember the anniversary year recently, Lyndon Johnson, the Civil Rights Law was really a byproduct of, of that, um, decision. And I just think the founding fathers, they did so much so well. I think, you think about the founding fathers, the founding fathers were thinking about facing the British. They weren't thinking about Facebook. But they did a fabulous job on so many issues. And I don't think they ever thought that what they envisioned for government was that people could, you know, go out and practically buy elections. This is what I think they wanted, wanted to have happen. They're here, we've been at it for, what, ninety minutes or more? And there hasn't been a bad point in the House. Nobody's screaming at each other. People are talking about serious issues. We started off with a terrific point about the fires and, and ranching and sage grouse. We're talking about taxes, and we're talking about medical, and we're talking about schools. This is what it's supposed to look like. This is what I think they had in mind, not people spending a gazillion dollars on TV commercials and then it says, you know, paid for by Americans who love the flag. Paid for by everybody who really loves apple pie. What's that about? Is that really what we thought we were signing up for in our country? And I, I know that, you know, maybe we have some more questions. Do y'all want to take some more questions or? One takes more and make sure everybody gets a chance to be heard, who wants to be heard?
I want to thank you. This is the first one of these I've been to, and I appreciate the philosophy of listening to the people. Mostly just have a comment that, uh, I appreciate, uh, what you have done to protect our Fourth Amendment and that you think privacy is important and, uh, trying to rein in the NSA and protect our constitutional rights. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. And that, yesterday was a bit of a surprise when Mr. Snowden asked Mr. Putin the same question, and I asked him to copper. I thought I'd seen practically everything. That was a little bit of a surprise. But here's what's really an issue, and it goes back to the founding, you know, fathers. Ben Franklin said anybody who gives up their liberty to have security really doesn't deserve either. And he really staked out that ground. And the question is, are we going to start moving back to it? I was on the depressed a couple of weeks ago, and I said pretty much that same thing, because I think finally we're starting to move back towards what Ben Franklin had in mind. Look, I'm on the intelligence grid. My older child calls it the so-called intelligence. It is a really dangerous world out there. There are a lot of people who do not wish the red, white and blue well, do not wish people Lakeview or Coos Bay or Portland or anywhere else, do not wish us well. That's a fact. But a lot of these proposals, like collecting all the phone records on law-abiding people, are not making us any safer and, in my view, unquestionably undermine our liberty. Now, people said for a long time, because I've been out just quite a while and I was sort of standing out there by myself and all the rest, they said, Ron, it's metadata. Did you hear that phrase? Metadata is really data about data. They said it's not content. We're not listening in to your conversation, typical case. The reality is, what a program like that is, when you collect all the phone records in America of all the law-abiding people, it is a federal human relations database. And if the government knows who you call and when you call and in many instances where you call from, government knows a lot about you. The government knows you called the psychiatrist three times in twenty-four hours, once after midnight. I think that's kind of a big deal. So I said, what we ought to be doing is, number one, let's say our government ought to get what it needs, when it needs to protect the American people. We have this thing called an emergency order, where when the government seals that our security is at stake, the government can go and move now to secure the information, go get, take care of the legal stuff after the fact. But absent that, we really ought to have some basis, get a court order to get the information and get it on the person and get what essentially is two hubs, the individual and their whole kind of network in the, um, process, and that's as it, you know, should be. But what happened over the years is the intelligence leadership. Now, mind you, this is not the rank-and-file. These rank-and-file people, there's thousands of them, are so patriotic and so dedicated to our country, they give up Little League games, time to family, just to serve America. So Mikeoral's not a mess, but the intelligence leadership consistently for years, I guess because they never thought anybody called on it, would just mislead the American people and say one thing in public and do quite another in private. So you can go to YouTube when you're home, and you can see General Keith Alexander, the former head of the NSA, saying on YouTube that the government doesn't hold data on U.S. citizens. Right. I consider that one of the most false statements ever made about U.S. surveillance. You can see it on YouTube. And that's what led me to ask Director Plappert's question, and I did, because repeatedly, Mr. Alexander and others were saying these things that simply were so disconnected from reality, I kept trying to figure them out. So finally, Mr. Plappert came one day in public and I said, I'm not doing my job if I don't ask him this question. It just would not be responsible, given what Mr. Alexander is saying, and he said it repeatedly. He tried to get it out, and so we gave him the question ahead of time, so he wouldn't be surprised. And he said, no, the government doesn't collect any type of data, and he wouldn't even correct it after the fact. Would not even correct it after the fact. So I saw what Mr. Snowden said in the paper, so I guess everybody now is going to ask me, where do I take Mr. Snowden? And I don't talk about people who've been charged with criminal violations, but it seems to me, regardless of the messenger, if the government is engaged in mass surveillance of innocents, that threatens our liberty, and I see that as my job to deal with.
Thank you.
All right, I'll take one more before my voice shoots out. Then I'm going to stick around and visit the people in the pizza. Do we have any students out there? Are those students all cut out? Make sure they're inspected Friday night at the, at the pizza place where.
Oh, seven, three.
Can anybody else?
Sure, it's all yours.
Okay. You're on the Finance, you're chairman of the Finance Committee, correct?
Yeah, right.
And you're on the, something, rather, Energy Committee.
No, I got, I'm, I'm now I'm sitting next to that chair. It can only be chair of one, so I used to be chair of Energy and Natural Resources, and a month ago I became chairman of Finance, so I sit next to the chairman of Energy now and also chair of Finance.
Okay. On the Finance Committee.
Yeah.
Supposedly, the Defense Department is getting rid of Tomahawk and Hellfire missiles, which are the main weapon systems for our Navy, and there's nothing in them to, to replace them. So I would like to see the Finance Committee do something to keep that from going to zero or they're going to have to throw water balloons if things got bad.
The, uh, the Finance Committee sure doesn't deal with the military budgets, that's the Armed Services Committee, but I share your view that we have got to think through what is the best way to promote our national security. And we've seen, and this is a good one to kind of quit on, we've seen in the last month, in the last six weeks, we have seen certainly on the part of Mr. Putin, a very dramatic set of developments, which certainly does not bode well for our national, you know, security. He is clearly in an expansionist kind of mood. There's no question that the Russians have resented, you know, what went on in the middle nineteen nineties, early nineteen nineties, and, and these countries, you know, break, breaking off. They see this as a big, big threat to them. They see these countries making alliances, you know, with, with the West, and maybe they won't need the Russian natural gas and the like. And I think we are in for some very challenging, um, times. Now, because I serve on both the Finance Committee and the Intelligence Committee, we've really been mobilized to try to use our economic might to isolate Mr. Putin, and he's having a lot of trouble. He's having trouble with his currency, he's having trouble with his stock market, he's having lots of, you know, troubles. And there are lots of other things we can do in terms of economic sanctions. We can make it tough, for all practical purposes, for Mr. Putin to, like cash and check or, you know, engage in a, in a money trend. So there are international economic institutions that we really could cut him off in that way. That's a very drastic step, but we could almost make him pay cash for things that he and his people, you know, wanted. So I just think the point you're making is very good, and we ought to think through our national security agenda here again in the last, given the events of the last, you know, six weeks. And that's, that's what any president faces. You know, if you're President of the United States, you say, hey, I'm going there because I want to work on education, or I want to work on the health, or I decide I'm going to fix the infrastructure in here, working your head off with your Democratic or Republican and gift line. The world intervenes. The world intervenes. And Mr. Putin, we had some sense of, you know, movement in this direction here over the last year, last eighteen, eighteen months, has dramatically changed the foreign policy agendas. We've got to start rethinking, you know, what we spend on, how we spend it. And I think that, um, by way of just wrapping up, I just want to say a big, big thank you. And I will tell you, coming up, I never thought I would have these kinds of possibilities for public service. First-generation kid, as we used to say, with a Facebook radio, to have all of these kinds of opportunities for public service. This has been an enormous honor, and now to chair the Finance Committee, which deals with so many of the issues we're talking about, I just want you to know, one, that our door is open. Wayne and Mary are here. Feel free to call them nights and weekends, take all their free time, so that they make sure they give you your tax dollar. And I just want everybody in Lakeview and Lake County to know that as long as I have the honor to represent you in the United States Senate, this is the way we're going to do it. Who cares if the Supreme Court keeps making these decisions? We'll try to change them, we'll try to do it the way we do it in our system, you know, of, of government with folks and guns and bullets, and as long as I have the honor to represent you in the United States Senate, this is the way we'll do it. Thanks for coming. Particularly good to be here. I think a big round of applause for our great focus and change of view.